But that was.
Yeah. I can say.
Very good. The time is four thirty P. M. The Pelican Rapids City Council meeting of sixteen August twenty twenty-two is called to order. I'll ask those in our council chambers, if you have not signed the roster by the backdoor, if you do so before you leave. And also, everyone, please put their phones on vibrate. We'll call a member, Daniel.
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Sir Mark Rafferty. Councilmember Steve Foster.
Here.
Mayor Brent Frazier.
Here. I want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening, those in our council chambers, those that are joining us by Zoom. And also, remember, our city council meetings are on the city YouTube channel and also seen on Channel fourteen on Wednesday evenings. Announcements, I only have one for the next two weeks. The next city council meeting is on Tuesday, August thirtieth, four thirty P. M. in the city council chambers. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here for citizens' comments? If you aren't on the agenda this evening, anyone here for citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, additions, deletions to the agenda. I have one deletion. Please delete item number eight, commercial kitchen feasibility study. Please delete item number eight, commercial kitchen feasibility study. Any other additions or deletions? Any other additions or deletions?
I move to approve deleting eight.
Motion second, Dan.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried. Item number four is approval of a consent agenda, which I'll read. Item number four is approval of council minutes from July twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. Four B is approval accounts payable listing. Four C one is financial report, which is in your packet. And four C two is a police report, which is in the packet. So motion two.
I'll move to accept that.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried. Item number five, street and park report. We have superintendent Brian Olson with us this evening.
So, yeah, um, we've been fairly busy in this, in our department, just building things. So, make sense of the road on Sixth Street Southeast for a person that wants to build a home in this area. So, we've palled and hauled and hauled into that. Sixth Street Southeast is just off of Fifth Street and Third and a half, um, in the southeast, right? Where if you were going down to where the Martins live. And then when you make that corner, that's Sixth Street. It comes actually out of Second Avenue, but it's undeveloped everywhere I've lived in this area. So, pulled many, many loads in there, um, got that ready, so things are gonna start building in September, I believe. Um, the water main break that we headed from last summer winter is finally complete, so that hydrants is back live and hopefully we'll be getting asphalt in, in that this, this summer yet. Um, we had the household hazardous waste was up at the shop. If you missed it, they were, they were steady the entire four hours there, the things that people bring in and a couple of our guys do help them with that, so, so it goes pretty smooth. Um, and as we speak, actually, the water sewer services are being installed up on Rich Press Drive on that vacant lot that never was, uh, that they never were stuffed into, so that will be done for that property owner and be ready to go whenever, whenever they are. We did get the stop signs installed on Third Avenue Northwest that were approved here last month. Um, that was gonna be a learning curve, including for myself, because you're not used to stopping there, so, so I have caught myself, I hope, so better, better stop there. Um, and then we did, I did finally get a quote a while ago, the library board had requested staining of that front awning on the southeast corner of the library. Um, we got a quote from, from a painter for fifteen hundred dollars, if, if that's something that the council wants to do as they requested, or, or now they'll have to approve that out of somewhere.
Where would it come from?
General finance, come out of the, yeah, general fund. That's what I'm, what I'm suing. And he'll have to go a little darker stain with it just to master some water spots from when it was wide open, some water stains that he'll, he'll be able to blend in. It's dry now, but.
That's material, I am, David?
Yes. Yeah.
What's council's desires?
I'll move, we go ahead and do that.
Second? Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried.
Perfect, thank you, I'll take care of that. Parks end of it, we've had a busy summer, all the events went out without a hitch, according to our department anyways, that was good. And then, also, we've been working a lot in the northwest park, if any of you've been over that Baptist church, so we installed two more pieces of equipment. And there too, everything's been paid for to date through the grants and stuff through the Rotary. Um, now we're short about three thousand dollars to finish putting in the pea gravel to finish it off so we can open it, which is not in the budget, so there again, I'd have to take it out of the general fund if you approve it. We've used all of our pea gravel that we had available and, and we're still quite a bit short, so, um, that's, that's both the only way we're gonna get that part finished is by, by purchasing more pea gravel to put in there.
And that's all that's left?
That's all that's left, yep. Then we'll have some minor, you know, some landscaping, but we have material there to do it, so. So that, that, but again, that has to be approved by the council because of.
How was the total there, Brad?
About three thousand dollars. It's one hundred and fifty yards that we figure we need, so.
So then it could be opened up?
Then it could be opened up, yep. Yep, we'll have a couple signs to install after that and then it'll be ready to go, so.
I'll move, we go ahead and purchase pea gravel to finish that, I'll say, ground equipment setup.
We have a motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried.
Perfect, thank you. And then I believe in front of you.
Could we approve your report?
Oh, yeah.
Could I ask a question about Park real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
Has that park been named?
No.
Oh.
It has not.
Could you think about having?
The park board is talking about when, till they're get back to school and having the kids try to come up with a name for it.
That was my question, who's named the other park, Thompson Park?
Um, family donation. Jim show his family donation, Sharon's family donation, Thompson or Brown, we had it.
Yeah.
Was, was that, it's always been under whoever puts the most money into that, yes, so, but.
Okay, before we move on to Brian's next point of business, I can, is there a motion to approve the street and park report?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion.
Are you gonna give us?
Hearing none, all in favor, go ahead.
Anything on the pool today?
No, I don't have that information from her yet, she's finishing up her last, last session of swimming lessons, so.
Okay, how much longer is the pool gonna be open?
Right now it is closed, it closed August fifth, but Aaliyah is doing a fourth session of swimming lessons this week and next, and then I will have all the records and stuff for, in September.
All right.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried. Okay, Brian is gonna talk about a temporary construction easement, and that was handed this evening on the desk, and Brian?
Yep, okay, so Scandler Township on the north, very north end of the airport, four hundred seventy-third street, I believe it is, street, they, they are struggling with it a lot in the winter time. So they're trying to take some of the mounds and the humps out of the, out of the ditches and out of the area fields. So, what they're proposing is to, to level those off, and they do have a two hundred foot easement into our property, but the only areas they'll be going that far is at the very east end and on the very west end where the biggest humps are. So, um, after I, they was contacted by these, by Scandler, I called, um, now, Aaron Alex out of Minnesota, so I knew, you know what, because on the runway they have a cone that goes out and they're gonna, you know, be so much, they have to clear and everything, so, um, he had probably no problem with it. The only thing he asked is I file a note of when, when construction comes. And they have also worked out a, a deal for crop loss with our person that leases our key. So, that's all worked out with them. And so it's just temporary construction easement while they do this, and then everything will be put back together and next spring we'll be able to be farmed as normal.
When do they plan on starting?
They're planning to start this August twenty-second.
Oh.
Next week, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
What's the location again?
Uh, very north end of our airport property, off the north end of the runway.
Okay.
Four hundred seventy-third, and we have the field that goes all the way around it there.
Yeah.
It just borders that road on the north end.
Okay.
Yep. It won't, it won't affect the runway, it won't affect the airport whatsoever.
All right.
Construction equipment there, yeah, if you looked on the, on the map, there you see.
You can see the north end of the runway on.
You can see that.
On the portion of the map.
I move that we approve the temporary construction easement with Scandler Township.
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried.
Perfect.
And what, you wanna stay situated there?
Yep.
While you're still here, let's jump down to item number fourteen, twenty twenty-four, project stormwater baffles consideration. And I don't know, Don or Brian, who's in charge on this?
I'll, I'll do it, I got a couple of the things I kinda wanted to throw out there too regarding just update on the twenty twenty-four project. So, Mindot, Tom Pace contacted me and, uh, because the, the, the whole project is not going to create more than one acre of new impervious surface, they don't have to do anything fancy as far as, um, catching the stormwater that comes down Main Street and goes from the bridge deck into the river, uh, they thought they were gonna have to catch it, treat it, and release it, but they're not going to because they don't meet that threshold. However, Tom said that if the city is interested in having, uh, what they refer to as swaffle baffles or something like that, a baffle system where, where the storm drain or the stormwater comes down, it'll fall into the, the, the catch basins or whatever, and then it, um, the solids will be separated out through a screening process or whatever, then the water will basically go down to the river, the solids will collect, and then, um, that will have to be cleaned out once or twice a year. They put, I don't know, if he was talking a couple of them, or if there was two to four or whatever of them on there, but, um, they said that if the city would like to have that done, just for the environmental purposes of it all, uh, Mindot would, would pay the cost to install them, but they would ask the city maintain them by cleaning them out, et cetera, and there wouldn't be any, any reimbursement or anything that the city would get for doing that. It was just the agreement would be, Mindot puts in the, the cost, they, uh, or funds them and puts them in, and the city maintain them. So it creates, uh, a little bit more work for our guys, um, to clean those things out when they need be. We, like you said, anticipates once, maybe twice a year, but it could be more often depending on rains and that type of thing. So, the question before the council is, um, would the council want Mindot to put them in, or should we just forego them and let it, uh, the storm drain or the stormwater run off, just like it does now? And of course, talking to Brian, I can let him share his, uh, kind of opinion about it, but.
What are your sentiments, Brian?
I have a couple. First of all, anytime, anytime you catch water and try to filter it, it's going to back up. We have enough issues downtown right now with stormwater that I firmly don't believe we should be catching it and filtering it if not necessary. Also, I don't, I don't believe we need to add to our maintenance on any of that downtown is my, is my, I, I don't, I'm afraid by catching the stormwater, especially when we get one, two inch rains as we, as we do, um, I think it's just gonna overfill these baffles and, and we're gonna have the same issue we're having now.
So when the project is complete, do you think we will continue to have, have those problems that we're having now?
I don't believe so, due to more storm drains we're putting in, a larger upgrading our stormwater system is, is, right now we have a deteriorated storm system that has broken by freezes in the winter and causes us all the issues. You know, there's only three, um, on the bridge decks, and that's where all the water congregates in the cities. It's just by adding more upgraded storm sewer system, I think we're gonna solve that problem.
And part of it too is that, especially on the west side, by the BD side, that curb isn't very tall.
The curb varies so much down there.
Yeah, so when they redo the project, you know, they're telling us that all the curbs will be at appropriate heights and everything else too, so that should in itself will help on the west side of the road.
The, the storm drains on the west side or on the east side are also connected to the main on the west side, obviously. So anywhere there's a storm drain on the east side of Broadway, it flows across to the east west side, because that's where it discharges.
So Tom Pace was saying that basically it's fine if the city doesn't want to do it, um, it just for our sake, and so we have it in the minutes, if the council would basically make a motion to not install them or install them either way, um, so next time we go back to review minutes, we've got it in minutes what we decided to do.
I said, what are we talking, like, I don't know, size or?
Oh, they can't be very large because there isn't a lot of space down there, you know, and I'm imagining them under, underground. I'm imagining like getting storm, stormwater inlet protection, like they put those orange bags in, in storm drains, catch basins when they do construction projects. I'm thinking a little larger scale than that.
There's not a lot of junk that goes down the curb, I mean, down the street.
In the spring, you know, it could be raining before we're able to sweep, but that's been doing that for a hundred years.
Okay.
I mean, since a hundred and twenty-five years, however old Pelican is, I guess. The river's always been there.
So I guess Brian's recommendation would be not to have them installed.
I'll make a motion that we follow Brian's recommendation, not have the baffles installed.
A second. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried. Thank you, Brian.
I have a question though. This probably should have been on the street side of it, but, and I, I think I know the answer, but who is responsible for like trees overgrowing the sidewalks? For example, right across the street from Ascension on the corner of Third and Fifty-nine.
That one where you planted in the boulevard?
That maple tree?
Yeah.
And then on the other side of the street on, where the pine trees are all over that sidewalk, I mean, if you're walking on that sidewalk, you're gonna get a face full of branch rather, I mean, wherever.
Are you talking about by the retaining wall?
Yes.
Those will be removed, because they're in Mindot's right of way, Mindot, the plan is they're gonna remove all of them trees and they're going to redo the retaining walls.
Well, that's fine for twenty twenty-four, but I mean, if I'm walking down the street and I don't get a pine branch in my face.
So you're talking between Second and Third Avenue.
Right, right down here on the corner of the, of, across the street from Ascension, right on.
Maple.
There's a maple.
It's a maple. If you're, if, if, right.
Across the street.
Across the street.
They're not in the yard, but they're just.
Yeah, the low hanging branch. So I mean, if, if I'm, and granted, my, I tend to drive around in a little higher profile vehicle than most, but if I'm coming from the west, or excuse me, from the east to Fifty-nine, I'm out in traffic before I can see if there's any cars coming because of that tree right there with the branch.
We'll have to send him a letter, I believe we did last year, and then he cut it way up, but have to either have him maintain it or we will, because it's in the boulevard.
So it's, it's the responsibility of the?
Well, as it's planted in the boulevard, it's actually a public tree. So, if we wanted to, we could remove it, if he doesn't want to maintain it.
And he put it in without checking to see?
Because on the side, because I was, last Wednesday I happened to be there trying to see if I was gonna kill anybody when I came out with my truck, but on the other side, on the sidewalk side, it was, the branches are hanging way down low too, so if anybody's trying to walk on that sidewalk, they're gonna get.
Correct. We can cut them off the sidewalk, we just can't get it on their property, so, yes.
Any other questions for Brian?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The other, the other two things I just wanted to throw out there, Mindot, in our last meeting, basically, what we were reviewing was like the thirty percent plan set for the twenty twenty-four project, so they're at the thirty percent design stage, and the thirty percent designs are either on the Mindot's website, so anybody can go and look at them, uh, they've got anything from the hydraulics to the, to our, our, our water sewer main work, to the roads, the whole ball of wax is up there, and so a lot of documents. Or you can go to the city website and also basically under projects, you can find the twenty twenty-four project and review them too. Anybody, like the officials that want to review that stuff, or anybody for that matter, um, can review it. Mindot needs any comments that might be made regarding the plans and specs to them by Aug- August thirty-first, and then they will basically continue on, you know, to the sixty percent design thing, because there's still stuff they're working on, so. And then the other thing is, um, we talked a little bit about, we all, we all know that the elm trees, um, are ash, ash trees are all gonna be taken out partly because of the project and because they're sooner or later gonna get nailed with, uh, mineral ash boards, so. So, Mindot suggested that the city put together what they refer to as a beautification committee, and this committee, whoever's, whoever we get to be on that committee, will basically be involved in taking a look at all the area boulevards and helping come up with the plan for what they refer as beautification, but it's the, it's the trees, it's any other plantings, it's, it's what we want in the boulevard along the main highways. So, um, I'm gonna be probably starting to, to reach out, but if there's anybody that wants to be on that committee or that, somebody that has a suggestion of who they think might be a good fit for that committee, let me know, because we need to try and do that and try and get that committee to put, uh, that committee put in place sometime within the next, I would say, um, meeting or two, so that they can start kinda getting, um, having them get, get togethers in them discussions. Now, Mindot does have a, a, what they call beautification, uh, um, office where they'll have somebody that basically with, that, that, uh, Mindot will have work with this committee, help them identify the right trees, make sure that they, they know within the, the different areas of the right of way where we can have stuff, um, you know, work with that committee to get everything put in place and get on the plan, so. Just to let you know.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Brian. Uh, there's nobody here from the library board yet, so we're gonna skip over that for now. Let's go down to item number nine, edible cannabinoid products, and, uh, I wanted to talk about this while Chief Statham was still here. I did an inquiry last week about the sale of legalized hemp products here in Pelican Rapids, and what we're talking about is the H, the THC ingredient, which is an intoxicant drug. And this, this all stems back from the twenty eighteen, uh, federal farm bill that legalized hemp-based products in the United States. And we saw a dramatic increase of sale of hemp, hemp-based products containing the intoxicant HTC with little protection for consumers and nothing to stop the sellers from marketing just to children. I did contact Senator Bill Ingerbretson's office and he gave me some, they gave me some of this information relating to that. And fortunately, within the last legislative session in May, the legislature passed regulations that limit the sale of this at gas stations, convenience stores, CBD shops that had previously contained unrestricted amounts of hemp-derived THC. But there's still a loophole that involves, and Chief Statham can probably talk to it, it involves a, a product to have a higher number of milligrams of this product than, but still legalized under point three percent threshold. Also, this bill prohibits the marketing to children, sales to anyone under twenty-one, and requires packaging to be clearly marked in child-resistant tamper-evident containers. Uh, this has had, has been addressed in Minnesota law, but there are still a lot of unknowns at this point, and, uh, like I said, I contacted Senator Ingerbretson's office and also the League of Minnesota Cities is a resource for this too. So one of the questions was, you know, what, what can the city, what can the city council do at this point? There are cities in Minnesota such as Stillwater, Robinsdale, Saint Joseph, and Marshall that have enacted moratoriums on this product until more information can be derived, so we know what we're talking about. At this, at this point, it's, you know, it sounds a little mysterious and probably something that we shouldn't accept people within our, our city too. So what we're, what we could talk about is if we want to address a resolution to impose a moratorium on this, or if not. Don?
I think one of the biggest concerns and why some of the cities have, and I think you're gonna see more, more cities out there, putting a moratorium on it is because of, they don't know what the effects of what the legislature or what the law is, you know, what the effects of that might be, and so instead of letting, um, all these products starting to flow out into the marketplace in, in communities and then finding out there's a problem, they want to kinda step in a little bit slower, and so the cities that are putting together moratoriums are doing it for, for two reasons, to wait and see what happens, but also take some time to develop an ordinance for that city if they want to do that, to consider it. And so, uh, if that's something that the city council wants to do prior to somebody possibly starting to sell this stuff in town, then, um, they would just have the city attorney put together a resolution declaring a moratorium. Once that's declared, you have, uh, twelve months, I believe is what it is, to, to, to study the issue, put together an ordinance if that's what you're gonna do, and lift the moratorium. And then once the moratorium is lifted, you know, everybody that, that does start, um, um, selling, uh, these products, and the city would have to follow whatever ordinance the city council puts in place, or it might be prohibited.
Chief Statham, at the end of the moratorium?
Well, I could see, you know, with this product and things like that, and what marijuana's been, you know, kind of evolving into and stuff like that, you know, there are some properties that are good for, you know, medical reasons and things, but it's the other side of the coin as far as having all these products and all these things going on, you know, there's not very many dispensaries around in the area, uh, or even Saint Paul and things that, you know, it, that will bring in a lot of other folks from all over the place. And I think that would be a good thing for Pelican overall, um, as far as that goes, just by what, you know, we're looking for, what they're trying to get.
Mm-hmm.
I think prohibited would be the way to go for me, but I guess that's, you know, the council and the city wants. There's just been a lot more things happening.
So you would speak in favor of a twelve-month moratorium before we could learn more about this product?
Yes.
And keep in mind, that's what the whole purpose of the moratorium is, is so that the city council can research this topic, give you more time to see what other cities are coming up with and what the effects, you know, more, more of the effects, what the effects might be as a result of this law, without having to worry about the effects after the fact, because once people are starting, starting to sell it, it's pretty, it's kinda hard to tell them to stop. So, that's all the moratorium does, is says, we're gonna make sure that this doesn't happen until we know more about it. You don't have to, if the moratorium is put in place, you don't have to wait twelve months. I mean, you can list, lift the moratorium anytime you want to, it's just. It's just putting this, this, by putting the moratorium in place, you're prohibiting any sale of it until you know more to determine whether you want to put an ordinance in place, prohibit it, or whatever the case may be.
I'm hoping to put a 12-month moratorium in place.
Yep.
You have to, we have to do a resolution, right?
Well, what will happen, and I, I was waiting for a second and discussion before I stepped up again, but, but what I was going to say is, if that's what the city council would like to do, then I would, I would recommend that they direct the city attorney to put together a resolution, putting the moratorium in place, which would be entertaining potentially the next council.
Yeah, so no voting tonight?
I would second Steve's motion, but if we're going to postpone it till the next meeting, that's fine.
Yeah, you really, you really put the moratorium in place with a resolution that would have to be drafted. We don't have that right now.
We're going to take action on this tonight for her to write up?
I would say that that's what you would do is direct the city attorney to put together a resolution calling for a moratorium on it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'll just add that there is a draft resolution that we can get from the league that they put that, I believe Danielle mentioned or whatever. So we can get a draft and get that to the city attorney to.
I have a question, and I make no claim that I'm any expert in the cannabis or dispensary market, but I think we're talking about two different things, right? You're talking about the dispensaries as far as medical marijuana and we're, and this is, these are about like the edible type candy type stuff you can, I mean. So do we know if any stores are selling these in town yet or already?
I think they have the beverages.
Okay, so, and this would fall under that moratorium, I'm assuming?
That's, that's what we're going to, that's what we're going to have, that's what we're going to have to look into.
If they are already selling it, they then have to stop?
If there's a moratorium in place, I assume they would have to stop.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Would this be superseded by state law then if it?
It basically, what it would do, well, the, part of, part of doing the moratorium and then doing the research and putting an ordinance together would be to determine all that. Because a lot of what that ordinance would do, would do would be to, if, if we're going to allow it, it would make sure that we're following and abiding by state law. Whether we could be more restrictive or less restrictive rather than just prohibiting it outright, this has to be determined. That's one of the things that needs to be done.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying yes.
Aye.
All is the same? All is the same? Motion period. Thank you. Are we ready for item number seven?
Aye.
Somebody was going to join us.
Yeah, I don't know if, if, if there's somebody from.
Hello, yes, Pat Melvin is present.
Okay, Pat Melvin is present.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
My name is Justin Berry. I'm a citizen.
Could you address the microphone?
Citizen nearby, and I just want to make a comment about the hemp and all that, that whole subject. Because as a father, and, you know, a lot of my friends have young children. And I think it's great that you guys are, are going with trying to figure out and analyzing the, the subject with THC and edibles and drinks and all that stuff, because this stuff is so, I, I think it's really toxic for our community to be, you know, having places that sell it and then attracts, just like Chief was saying, attracts people to come in. But that'd be so great to figure out what is, what other places are doing and to prevent it from happening. You know, different stories of people eating too much of it or all that toxic stuff. So I just want to say thank you guys for doing that as a citizen of a nearby, I don't even know where I'm a citizen of. But right up north uptown, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number seven is city administrator position. There was information in our packet and we also have Pat Melvin, who is joining us by Zoom. And I can turn this over to you, Pat.
Sure, that would be wonderful. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and Administrator Salka. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to present remotely this evening, so. I just wanted to give you kind of a recap. Far, I did meet on July 21st. I met with about 13 different individuals that included council members as well as members of the business community. Spent the day visiting with them and gathering input on kind of the qualities and the background and experience that individuals would like to see in your next city administrator. So that information basically got put into a summary, the profile, I should say, that we'll be took, that we'll be reviewing and talking about a little later. But before we get to that, there's a couple items that I'd like to discuss specifically that I think kind of built into what you will have and see in the position profile. So I hope that everybody has had a chance to review that and I'm certainly willing to, as we go through this, to take any questions. The profile is not finalized until you, as the council, approve it. And then obviously, we're planning on going ahead and posting and starting to look for an individual to fill the big shoes that your current administrator left behind. So first item that I'd like to address is kind of the salary range. As you can see from the first page there of the profile, the salary range is looking at $78,166 up to a range max of $104,200. That's an annual salary. What I did to try and assess how well from Administrator Salka, a list of your comparison cities, and I see there are about nine, we worked with Flaherty and Hood on that. And so I was able to pull through the League of Minnesota Cities Salary Survey. I was able to pull five of those comparison counties' wage information for their administrators. That range averaged from about $83,000 roughly to $107,000 for a maximum. So I would certainly say that Pelican Rapids with that salary that you have posted here is certainly within range. You know, it is a somewhat challenging labor market. However, you know, I don't think money is, is what makes a big difference for a lot of people. Obviously, that may catch their attention initially, but I think the fact that you are well within the range, I think you're, you're adequate there. If you wish to increase the salary range, it's not going to hurt you, but I don't think that, you know, an individual who is considering this position is going to be motivated by a little more money. So any questions or any thoughts on the salary range? Is everybody comfortable with the proposed range of $78,000 to about $104,000? Exactly what's shown on the cover page of the profile?
I'm fine with that.
Yes, I'm fine, Pat.
Okay, that sounds great. Then the next thing I'd just like to take a look at with you is the job description. The job description was, it's dated 1/13/10 as the last revision. I did talk with Administrator Salka and asked if there were any significant changes, anything that he felt that needed to be updated. He felt that it was still very valid and an accurate reflection of the work that he does do. So I, I don't have any suggested changes unless a council member wants to inquire, you know, with the administrator or about any sort of responsibility or skill set that may be missing in there. The one thing that I will say is that in discussion with Administrator Salka, we did modify the years required. And I think that's because really what we want to do in a recruitment is we, we want to encourage people to apply. They may not have, you know, the 10 years of experience or the five years of experience, but we certainly don't want to exclude people from applying for the position. As we go through the recruitment process, there are different stages, at which point the council will have an opportunity to kind of pick and choose who the top candidates are. So we did, you know, look at making the requirements a little bit less for someone to apply for, for the position. So you'll notice that under the requirements there, we, the minimum qualifications, we dropped that down to two years. Any concerns or questions about the minimum requirements or the job description?
So Mike, this is Don. So basically, in the packet of information, the job description that the council got was really what my job description was, and I think that was your intent, was to show them, here's what's in place right now. And one of the changes or the change would be the minimum experience level and education level, correct?
Correct. Yes, what will actually be posted in, in the job recruitment is, is two years as a city manager, administrator, or an assistant, or equivalent of, of two years of experience. You know, or, or equivalent combination of education and experience. Yes.
No other comments here, Pat?
Okay. Wonderful. Then we'll move on to kind of the, the final piece, which is the actual profile. As you can see, there's a lot of information that we put in there, knowing that an individual may be considering moving to the area, may be considering relocating family. And so part of what we do is we highlight, you know, some of the assets, whether it be the school district, healthcare, different things like that. We really do try and focus on, you know, on the area as well as the job. And obviously, we would love to have somebody who already resides in Pelican Rapids, who has a network and who's familiar with the area, but in the case that we don't, we want someone who is willing to come, move into the community and become an active member of the community. So like I said, I did go through and talk to 13 individuals back on July 21st. One of the changes I would like to make under the desired attributes, there was a beginning, beginning statement there was a good listener and strong communicator. This is three pages. There you go. A good listener and strong communicator with the council, staff, residents, contractors, et cetera. One of the things I'd like to do is maybe put businesses in there. You know, I did talk with multiple business owners in Pelican Rapids. And, you know, one of the things that I heard quite a bit was just the communication. So I'd like to maybe just tweak that, you know, also include in their businesses. So now I would be more than happy to take any suggestions that the council or administrator may have, and I will, I will take note of that and we will get those changes made. The plan is to go ahead and to get those changes made. The posting would then be from August 17th through September 14th, which is kind of a typical time period during which we advertise, we find that, you know, individuals, some individuals do apply early, but we do typically have a lot of very qualified people who kind of are doing their research early on. And as we get closer to the deadline date, we do find a lot of people trickling in in the, those last couple days. So any changes that the council would, would like to be made? We can change, look at different photos, different verbiage. If there's anything that I may have missed, that we may have missed and included in here, we can add items, so.
Pat, I believe our city clerk Danielle has a couple of comments.
Okay, wonderful.
Or suggestions.
Yeah, well, I just under, on the page with core duties of the position.
Okay, give me just a minute to get there with the picture of the fire truck.
Uh, police car.
Oh, the first one, okay.
Yep, sorry.
Please, no, no. Okay.
Um, the very top one says weekly department head meetings. And I, I don't want to start having weekly department meetings, so if you could just take weekly out.
Okay. So you want daily there?
Yeah.
That's, yeah, glad to take that out. Okay.
And I think that was it.
How about the population?
Well, and on the very front page, you had the population of 2561.
Okay.
So I don't necessarily know where you got that number. It doesn't match the number that you had on the salary page.
Okay.
But that's not what the most recent census number was either, so I'm not, I'm not exactly sure where you got that information, but.
Okay. Is there a specific number that you would like us to use? You probably have something more current and more accurate than, I'm not sure exactly where.
Well, I think the 2020 census was 2,577. And I, the, the one that we got, the estimate for 2021 was like four more than that or whatever, but it wasn't 2560, whatever that number was, 2561.
I think 2577 is the number, and I think just make sure that it all matches what it references population in the document.
Okay, so, so I think we'll just go with 2,601. Does that sound?
What?
No.
2577.
2577, okay. All right, 2577 is the number. Okay, yep, we'll go through and that'll be consistently the population number. I will make a change to the Excel spreadsheet as well and get a copy of that back to you.
Perfect.
Anything else, Danielle?
No, that's all my stuff, I believe.
Pat, on the page, the organization has a picture of City Hall.
Yes.
Uh, the second line down, it says, "The city council is a governing body and matters of city's policies, problems, and needs." Could we change the word problems to something else? Issues or concerns?
Yeah, no, that sounds great. Concerns and needs, okay. Much better. I like it.
Council have any questions or comments to pass? I read through it and I thought she did a per-
I read through it and I thought she did a pretty good job of putting all this together. There was, I don't know about the pictures, I thought were pretty good too, so.
Okay.
I got a kick out of maintains harmony among workers and resolve grievances. I don't know if that's even possible, but I enjoyed that.
Maybe a little idealistic.
There's a picture of one of our healthcare providers, and I don't know if you can pick one and not have both. I mean, they're both listed, but I don't know how you picked out the photo of Essentia.
I think it was just a random, just a random.
It might not be to them, but.
Are you okay with that photo? Or we could certainly find another one that maybe isn't, isn't specific to any, obviously the name's right there, isn't specific to any one provider.
It's pretty minor. We could add a photo, though.
Well, I think, I think part of the thing is Sanford is the one that's been here in Pelican Rapids for many, 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 many years. Essentia is the newer one that's only been here for a few years.
Okay.
For whatever that's worth.
Would you happen to have a photo that we could use of Sanford facility or sign?
We could take one.
Okay. That would be wonderful if you could do that, and we could certainly, you know, crop that in there.
Hey, Pat, could you put page numbers on these pages?
Sure, yep.
Is that when you reference something, it's much easier to go to?
Will do.
Council have any other corrections or improvements?
A comment, Pat, about the medical facility?
Yes.
It may be quicker, but you can just go to Sanford's Facebook page in Pelican, and you can see the facility. I don't know if that helps you or not, if you can take a pic from there.
Why don't, why don't we just plan on doing that? And then if, for any reason, if that doesn't work out, we'll reach out to, reach out to you. But, yeah, we'll do that, and that will hopefully get us what we need and keep things moving forward quickly, so. Okay. Great suggestion, thank you.
Did you hear that?
What was that? No copyrighted photos, please.
Yes.
Okay, I see no other questions here, Pat, if you want to move on.
Okay, so what I'm looking at, just based on our discussion, is I'm looking for the council to go ahead and to approve the profile. Like I said, that'll be posted. What I will do is as soon as we get that posted, I will send an email out to all the council members. I will copy the administrator as well as, who's it, the city clerk? That I'm also going to be copying on that, Don?
Correct.
So basically, everything that I send out, I will send out to you from my email. I'll copy those two individuals. We will post it out there. I will be giving you weekly updates. I will be reaching out to individuals that we have dealt with previously in other recruitments. And one of the things that I do ask is from you as council members, if you have any individuals that you think would be qualified and possibly interested in the position, that you certainly encourage them and reach out to them. Like I said, I will be sharing everywhere that it's posted. I will be providing a copy of the profile as well as where individuals can apply to each of you. Feel free to just simply forward my email or to let me know, and I'm more than happy to reach out to individuals. We will have it posted for about four weeks, and then we will get together and we will talk about those individuals. And you, as the council, will have an opportunity to kind of review both their personality assessment as well as their resume, cover letter, and a video interview in kind of that first round. And then you'll, from there, you'll narrow it down to those that you want to invite in for an interview. So at that selection meeting, which is going to be on October 11th, we'll be referring to candidates by numbers, because individuals do not become, candidate names do not become public information until they are selected as a finalist. So, but I will work with you through that entire process. If you have any questions, I will, you'll have my email, you'll have all my contact information, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have, so. Appreciate the opportunity to work with you, and I'm just looking for council approval to make these changes that we talked about here tonight, and then to move forward tomorrow with posting, and then notifying you of where those postings are and providing you with the information so that you can forward to individuals that might be interested, so.
I move that we approve the profile with the changes that we discussed tonight and authorize the posting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion? It used to be, when you agreed to interview, then it was public information? And you said a finalist would be public?
Yes, and then basically, those are the same things. So you're a semifinalist after we make the initial cut. So if an individual applies for the job but does not meet the minimum requirements, that person may not make it past the first cut. I will be going through, looking at the candidates and determining who doesn't make that first cut. And then they become a semifinalist. As a semifinalist, that's where you get information from a video interview, from a personality assessment, and from taking a look at their resume and cover letter. And so it's going from a semifinalist to a finalist. The finalist, their names, the ones who are invited in for an interview, their names are public information. But if somebody has applied for the job and does not get selected to interview, that person's name remains confidential, and nobody will know that they have applied unless they do get an interview, so.
Thank you.
Does that clarify?
Yes, thank you. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls the same, motion carried. Anything else, Pat?
That's all that I have, so thank you for your time this evening.
Excuse me, Pat, Don has a question here.
Pat, looking at, looking at what you guys just did tonight, then looking at it in relation to the timeline, the draft timeline that you had provided in the packet too, it would suggest that we're a week ahead of schedule then. Because it looks like, based on the timeline, and actually it says August 23rd, a special meeting on the timeline, but you guys approved here on the 16th, the job description, the profile, and to go forward with the posting. So does that put us a week ahead of schedule?
Yes, so thank you for bringing that up, yes, Don. So that would actually put us at, give me just a minute here. That would actually put us at, we had initially determined that November 2nd was going to be the interviews. We would actually be now looking at October 26th. So is that going to work for everybody's schedule?
Well, I think that basically was, the way it's listed on here was, I think, the regular meeting time?
Right.
And so is it possible that you could revise the timeline? Because you have on November 2nd, a special meeting. Is a special meeting still going to be required?
And the reason why we do that, the reason why we look to do a special meeting is because typically what happens on interview days, you have, let's say, four to five candidates coming in for interviews, depending upon what the council decides to do. We have had staff do interviews, you know, kind of leadership staff does interviews of candidates, and then the council does an interview. Typically, the council interview is about an hour-long interview. Existing, regular council meeting, it just makes for a really long, long time, and it makes it more complicated, because now you're also trying to find time to fit that council meeting in with possibly, you know, up to four or five hours of interviewing candidates for your administrative position. So that's why we typically do do a special meeting for the interviews. It ends up being a public meeting from the time you start the first interview. You interview all the candidates, then you go into deliberation, and then you have discussion about, you know, who the finalist is that you want to pursue recruiting as your next administrator. So it does make for a very long day, and just piggybacking that with a regular council meeting is quite exhausting.
So then the November 2nd special meeting still stands as it's shown?
We can, we can move that date up if you would like, but I would recommend that it be a special meeting. And if you have your regular council meeting on the 26th, I guess I would look to find another date around that, possibly even the 27th.
Yeah, the 26th is on a Wednesday, so that's not a normal council meeting. It'd be the 25th. No, the 25th would be?
Okay, so then we would want to avoid the 25th.
So it could be basically any time after the 25th.
So is, is it a, I mean, regardless of how long the interviewing takes, the deliberation takes, is, since it's a special meeting, is that all, it's all a public meeting, right?
Correct. If, if a member of the public or if the media would like to come in and sit through, through the interviews, they're certainly more than welcome to do so. That's a public meeting, open meeting. And what I'm going to do is before that, I'm going to work with you to kind of lay out the plan for that day. I'm going to work with you to determine what those questions are. It's going to be a pretty, you know, we're going to kind of follow the line of questioning. Obviously, you can ask clarifying questions or, or, you know, ask something that the candidate has already brought up, but we're going to try and kind of stick so that, stick to the questions, so that every candidate is treated the same in terms of the types of questions and the information that they're asked to provide.
Anything else, Don? Anything else?
Would you like to move, would you like to move that from November 2nd to the, it sounds like maybe October 27th or that?
And that'd be a Thursday. That's, that's a Thursday. The only reason I kind of bring it up is when you get down to the very end of this, with the new administrator starting sometime in December, if we could push that back and hopefully maybe get somebody ideally that would be able to start in November, that would be better for the position, because then they would be able to spend more time alongside me before I'm done. That's the only, that's the only reason I bring it up. So moving it back a week for that special meeting instead of November 2nd wouldn't be a bad thing to do. Council, it's up to you, though.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So do it on the 20th, would you rather do Wednesday the 26th or Thursday the 27th?
Let me, let me just check on my schedule here. I think I may have something on the, on the 26th. I do have a meeting on the evening of the 26th.
On the 27th?
Let me, I'm just trying to think here if there's something I can.
What's the downside of leaving it on the November 2nd?
The downside is just that it pushes everything, it keeps everything on this schedule and when the person could actually start. Because right now, we have them starting in December, and it possibly could be earlier in that month. And there's a possibility, depending on when it is in December, they might not have any time with it.
You know what? I can, I can make that October 26th work.
Okay, do you want to send a different, a revised timeline then, so we can get it out to the council?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So is that a, October 26th, is that a date that will work for all the council?
It's a Wednesday.
Typically.
Yeah. Looks like it will, Pat.
Sorry.
Yes, it should work.
Okay.
But you'll send out a revised schedule to Don first?
What time does it start? Have we talked about that or not?
Yeah, Pat, when does, on that, the special meeting date, what time does this all start? And what time would it typically wrap up?
Typically, you know, part of it depends on what you, as a council, would like to do. You know, I think in the cover letter, I alluded to the fact that sometimes, you know, there's a meet and greet, there's some different things. I don't know. I think things like that have changed a lot in, with COVID and different things, where we haven't been doing a lot of that recently. But typically what happens, and again, this can be tweaked to whatever you, as the council, want to do. Typically, we have kind of staff, leadership staff will typically meet with the candidates in the morning, and they'll have about a 25-minute interview. We'll have a set, you know, a set number of questions that they'll ask, and then the staff will have an opportunity to complete a form and provide some feedback that will later be shared with the council. So the staff typically start, you know, 10 o'clock in the morning with their interviews, then typically in the afternoon, about 12:30 or 1:00, we jump into the council having interviews. Again, the council interview is about an hour in length, and that goes, you know, the reason why we look to have maybe four to six candidates that we invite in for an interview is that oftentimes you find these candidates have other applications out there, and sometimes they apply for a job and they withdraw after being named a semifinalist. So we want to keep those numbers in the ballpark that if we do lose one or two candidates, we still have, you know, several individuals that are coming in and they're being interviewed. So typically, that goes probably until 4:00 or 5:00. And then depending upon how the council, how much discussion, you know, you'll be discussing the feedback that you get from leadership staff, and then you'll be making your decision. You know, sometimes those decisions are very quick, 15, 20 minutes. I've had other council boards that have, you know, spent an hour and a half, you know, deliberating and analyzing. It's really kind of up to the council, but it does make for a long day, so I would encourage them, if they can, to schedule, you know, noon into early evening for that purpose.
So I have to be here at noon? That was a long answer. Okay. Okay, any other questions for Pat? Seeing none, thank you, Pat.
Thank you, and I will get a revised agenda and more information on the profile. We're to post it out to you. Thank you, and I will get a revised agenda and more information on the profile alert posted out to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks much.
Don, are we ready to go to 15, City Hall? Well, let's jump down to item number 15, City Hall property sale discussion. There was an email that was sent from Chris Smith to Don regarding a city hall purchase. And we have Chris Smith joining us by Zoom this evening, and we also have Jay Pezneck here in the audience from Burton Funeral Home or Larson Funeral Home. Don, do you want to introduce this? Well, I could just start out by saying, at the last council meeting, Mr. Smith had basically, I think at the end of that meeting, he, it was determined and agreed upon that he would send over some terms for the council to consider, and so that's what that email consists of, what his thoughts were when he put it down. And I think probably the best thing to do, since Mr. Smith is online, is basically just let him kind of go through and lay them out, and he can elaborate on whatever, whatever he wants to, and then, and then just look for whatever he needs from the council. So Chris, if you want to do that, that would work.
Sure, that would be fine. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So yeah, I mentioned these terms at the last council meeting when there were a couple council members missing. So we thought the best way was to forward the terms to Don. I believe you put them in the package, and hopefully you won't have a chance to look them over. So just a quick recap from the first time, the first council meeting I attended where we had initially discussed just purchasing the second floor of the city hall building and coordinating and partnering on bringing the life safety system improvements to the building and sharing in that cost. I had discussed, when I, after returning from that meeting, we had discussed with our leadership team the possibility of buying the entire building, which you had mentioned at that meeting. And so we discussed it, and we are now interested in that. In fact, as we look things over, you know, if we can come to terms, that might be our preferred option. So I put some numbers together, sent those over, and they're summarized. I believe you're looking at those in the package right now with the purchase price. And essentially what these numbers are for is really just for the first floor. So the way we're looking at it is, you know, the second floor was to be donated so that we could invest in putting new funeral home there. So this would just be for the first floor, you know, primarily if that's the way you like to look at it. But a purchase price of $150,000, and we then would take care and handle all of the costs for the life safety improvements. So if you recall previously, we had agreed to split that cost. It was $100,000. We were going to split it in half. So we picked up that entire cost. And in conjunction with that, of course, the, one of the reasons that purchasing the building would be attractive other than using the second floor is that we could retain the city as a tenant on the first floor. So we put some basic terms together. These are negotiable, of course, but just something for you to consider. A tenure term, $10 a square foot, or about $4,000 a month with a small annual increase. And I thought it was pertinent that we mentioned the responsibilities of the city then as a tenant and now us as a landlord. So basically, we would take care of, as the landlord, all of the common areas, pay all of the common area expenses. The only exception, it's not really an exception, but the only expense the city would then have other than rent would be your own individually metered utilities, which would be gas, electric, and water. So we would make sure those were all separately metered, you know, when we do our construction so that we each have our own meter for those utilities. And then, of course, the water usage would be, part of the water use, the biggest use is for irrigation. That would be considered part of the common area cost. So really, the water usage here would just be the city's domestic water use. So with that said, and those basic terms laid out, those are any questions on that proposal?
I don't see any yet, Chris.
Okay. So, you know, I'm not sure if you have time to look at this or have thoughts on it, but I don't expect really any answers tonight. But if you would mind looking this over and having a discussion, you know, tonight, there's obviously not a lot of time to do that. But otherwise, and if you have a counter offer on this, that would be great. All that I would ask is that, you know, we're getting close to having our numbers finalized for the second floor, and whether we pursue this option or whether we go back to our original option of just taking the second floor. We're okay with either one. If this doesn't work out, we could always go back to that one. Because I believe I will mention that the city are not necessarily looking to be a landlord and own a building, have a tenant, and it might be easier and simpler to just be a tenant on the first floor. So if that's an option we like to look at, that's something we can address with this. So appreciate your consideration.
So Chris, are you looking for a final answer by our next council meeting, the 30th of August?
Well, what would that put us at? Towards the end of August?
30th, yes.
Well, if it's not the next one, I would say the first one in September, if that's reasonable. I think we will have our numbers by early September. We'll be sending out our bid packages, and we'd like to start yet this fall sometime. So, you know, whether it's an answer or whether you just have a counter offer. Because, you know, I can understand that if you, if these terms look good, great. If you have a counter, you think that would make more sense, please sit on that as well, and we can negotiate. So I could see that, you know, if we have some back and forth, that could take a little bit of time. But ultimately, we ask if we could have a, come to a decision in the next 30 days. That would be great. Inside which path we want to follow?
Yeah, Chris, this is Don. One of the things that I want to throw out there, too, is the process in which, you know, this all has to kind of follow also, which the city attorney also had alluded to at the prior meeting. So regardless of whether it's just selling the upstairs or the whole property, it still needs to go through a planning commission review just to make sure, you know, kind of the process is to make sure that it doesn't conflict with anything in the comprehensive plan. That's the main reason for that, and I don't see that as being an issue, but it does have to go through that process. So, you know, if you're looking at hoping the council to give you some direction on whether they're entertaining just the top floor or the whole building by the next meeting or the first meeting in September, it still should basically take into account it's going to, by the time it gets through the planning commission, back to the council again, you're going to be into November, or October, I should say.
Yeah, that could be a little bit more time. That would be okay. I'm just trying to keep this moving along. I mean, one hour, I'm looking at it this way. If we wanted to start this fall, which is our plan, we have some site work to do. If you recall, it's part of our plan, we wanted to build a two-stall garage up on the top of the hillside parking lot up there, and of course, you know, we'd like to have, you know, do the site work and the concrete work. And then we, there's a transformer up there we need to relocate. We'd like to do all of that for winterhead. So in these days, that could, that could be in November. So I'm just trying to think ahead here and make sure we have enough time.
Mayor, I, you know, obviously because this topic was on the agenda, I did invite the city attorney to the meeting tonight, and I think it would just be, you know, smart to see if she has anything to add.
Yeah, we have our city attorney, Lindsay Forsgren, with us, and she'll speak to this.
All right. Yes, Don, or Mr. Sola properly alluded to the applicable statute. And for everyone's reference, that is Minnesota statute 462.356, procedure to effect plan generally. And it's subdivision 2. So before the city can dispose of or acquire any publicly owned interest in real property, you do have to refer that proposal to the planning commission. I don't know that you need to necessarily have specifics. You don't need to have everything laid out to the T. But this is something that you are going to need to refer over to the planning commission for them to make sure that this doesn't conflict with the comprehensive plan. And that is the only thing that I have found that the city needs to do before selling real property. One thing you might want to do, just to err on the side of caution, is hold a public hearing just to get public comment on this sale. I did find some information on public hearings when real property is being sold for nominal value, and because you're looking at a partial donation and a partial sale, it might be a good idea to hold that public hearing just to make sure that everything is procedurally sound. As far as the referral to the planning commission, the planning commission has 45 days from the date of the referral. So if you were to refer this proposal over to the planning commission tomorrow, and they don't get back to you within 45 days, failure of the planning agency to report on the proposal within 45 days after such a reference or such other period as may be designated by the governing body shall be deemed to have satisfied the requirements of this subdivision. So if the planning commission does not act and you make this referral over tomorrow, this will be satisfied as of October 1st. And it could be satisfied before then if the planning commission reviews it and makes their findings and reports their, in writing to the governing body before then. But at a minimum, you're looking at, you know, assuming this proposal went to the planning commission tomorrow, you're looking at what, not minimum, a max of 45 days, which tomorrow to October 1st is 45 days.
Okay. And would that apply to either option? I believe what you said, right? Whether we were to order the purchase of the entire building or just the second floor, either one?
Yes, either way, because there is a sale of real property involved, whether it's a partial sale or a complete sale. It does need to go through the planning commission.
Okay, thanks.
When is the next scheduled planning commission?
We'd have, I'm not sure. We have to look. Typically, they meet the last Monday of every month. So, you know, a couple weeks from now, potentially. The question would be, one of the questions I have is, does the city, if you recommend a public hearing, does the city council do that, or could that be held at the same time when the planning commission looks at this and kind of reviews it in relation to the comprehensive plan to do their written findings, basically?
The public hearing, I think, would be, would be held by city council. So I think that's something that would be, to be set and determined by city council. The other option is, I mean, if you as a city council review the comprehensive plan, the last line in the subdivision, "The governing body made by resolution adopted by two-thirds vote dispense with the requirements of this subdivision when in its judgment it finds that the proposed acquisition or dispose of disposal of real property or capital improvement has no relationship to the comprehensive municipal plan." So you do have that option as well, but given the timelines we're working out, I think the safer route is just to go through the planning commission, considering they would meet on this. There's two opportunities to meet on this before that 45-day period.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would agree with that because if the council basically does want to refer it to the planning commission, if the, if the city council is going to have a public hearing on it, then what could possibly happen is the timing of it all, refer it to the planning commission, they could, they could hold their review of it, and then at the time that they actually submit their findings to the city council, that could be at the same time that the council is going to hold a public hearing so that their findings would be presented at that public hearing. The public could basically speak, and then the council could decide.
Correct. So if you do want to hold a public hearing, I would recommend a resolution at the next council meeting to set that public hearing.
Yeah, and I think we could get it timed out so that, because the next meeting is a week from now. So we could basically have a resolution, two weeks from now, sorry.
Yeah, so if you did that resolution and had a, set a public hearing for September, you got this proposal over to the planning commission, the planning commission could potentially meet on it at the end of August, and then you would maybe have that, that information for the public hearing in September. But either way, you will, through that process, have all the information available to you for making that decision.
And I think, I don't know whether it's going to make it, yes, the sale of the upper floor versus the whole property, whether that should be decided before going to the planning commission or not, I don't know that that matters. Because either way, the discussion before the planning commission is whether it's the upper floor or whether it's the whole thing, it's still going to meet the comprehensive plan in the same way. So, so I don't know that that, I guess my point is, I don't know that council necessarily has to determine what they're going to do first. It's the fact that you're looking at doing, you know, unless you know you're not doing either one, then we don't have to go, and Chris truly would want to know that, too, but as quickly as possible. But whether it's going to be the upper floor or the property as a whole, I don't think that needs to be determined. You can still recommend this to the planning commission for their review. You could do it tonight, for that matter.
And you could recommend it as two separate proposals, you know, the proposal of, you know, just the top floor versus top and bottom, and how you're going to do that. Sorry, I don't think, those requirements aren't hand in hand, just to clarify that. This, this specific requirement related to the planning commission is 462.356. I don't, I didn't bring the statute for the public hearing, but I did see some references to public hearing in the event you're going to sell property, real property for a nominal value, which the donation portion may fall under that.
Counsel, any questions for the city attorney?
I'm going with the Don.
Yes.
Well, I've got this in my head. One thing I do want to point out, too, I've had some citizens approach me about this with concern about whether it should be a competitive bidding or auction process. And I will note for council that that specific concern that citizens have brought to me, that's as related to county sale of real property. So I think there's some confusion there, and I just want to clarify that, that I did review the statutes that were people...
Doesn't pertain to sale.
It doesn't. It's, it's county disposition or acquisition of real property.
Kevin?
So when we, we just remodeled this, right? And how did we pay for that? Did we pay for it through a bonding or through, so what is, what's our bond? I mean, with our bond payment for that and with our rent payment, I mean, is that putting us underwater, or is it?
I don't, I, without going back and looking to see what that bond payment is and how much longer it goes, I don't have that information right in front of me. We could have it for the next council meeting as part of the discussion and talking about the resolution to set a public hearing.
I definitely don't think we have enough, still have enough information or discussion at this point to make any decision.
Referring the proposal to the planning commission and having that public hearing certainly does not bind the council to do anything. It's just part of the tools of gathering the resources and information.
So we could make a motion tonight for a resolution for the public hearing. We could do that tonight?
Well, the resolution, I think that's something that you should draft up and, and just like with every other resolution, it would make more sense to draft all that information up and pass that resolution so that it can be signed and appropriately executed.
Yeah, I think it's a matter of giving the city attorney direction to, to put together a resolution for the next meeting to be, look at calling for a public hearing.
The only thing we really have to do tonight is decide when, if we're going to send it to the planning council or not.
Yes, that's what I was just going to say, that tonight, your action should probably be, do we want to send a proposal or two to the planning commission?
Because by doing that, you basically are basically, and Chris know, too, that their plan, the plan is to go forward with, you know, selling something to...
If you do decide to move forward with this, this is a requirement that you have to satisfy, and that will be...
But to meet that timeline, didn't we also need to do the resolution?
The resolution at the next council meeting, there would be a resolution calling for a public hearing.
In September.
In September.
So we're still okay on the timeline?
Yeah.
I move that we pass this on to the planning commissioner.
Have a motion or second?
I'll second that, but the question I want clarified, I want to send both proposals to the planning council.
Yes. We have a motion, second, discussion?
I read the minutes from the last meeting, and I still, I want to sell the whole building and build a new city hall. So that didn't get very far in the last meeting, then I take it. Any discussion?
Well, we don't, I don't think we took it any further because two of the councilmen, you guys are going to discuss.
We wanted you to be in that discussion.
That's still where I'm at. I know I'm outnumbered, but I just, the idea of sharing and just doesn't sit with me very well.
You don't share well with others?
I don't share well. When it's simple, I like new. So...
Okay, any more discussion? Discussion? Okay, any more discussion? Discussion?
So by doing this, then, then that option would be gone, then?
No.
No.
No, that option would still be on the table.
Still there.
The council, the council's not binding itself to anything by doing this. You're just taking us out in the process if you do want to move forward. And that goes for selling the entire building, too.
Yeah.
It's still viable.
So we're not committing to renting the downstairs right now?
No.
No, no.
So you're sending multiple proposals to the planning commission for the planning commission's review?
Not enough, but okay.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried.
Does Chris have any last thoughts or comments?
Anything else from you, Chris, or Jay?
Well, I just want to say thanks for considering this. I now realize the process. I suspected it might take a little bit longer than what we discussed, which is fine. I'm just trying to keep our, you know, potential start date of this fall in mind, no matter whatever direction we go. So I'll work with Don on how to get this submitted. Is it for me to submit this to the planning commission? Is that right?
No.
Or will I just talk to Don about that, or is it the city council is going to submit for their review?
No, city council took that action just now. So basically, we will get it on the planning commission's agenda for their meeting on the last Monday of this month and have them do the review.
Gotcha. Okay. Just wanted to be clear there. So I can attend that meeting as well, I'm assuming, whether it's through Zoom or in person. So I can talk to you about that after the meeting done or later this week.
Yes, sounds good. Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
All right.
All right. I've got direction for resolutions, it sounds like.
Okay.
Couple of them?
Yes, let's go up to item number eleven. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve, calling for tax abatement public hearing, which is in our packet. Yeah, so this is something that Brian Olson actually alluded to. This is the resolution that's dated for that new home. He applied for the property tax rebate through the county and the city. And so part of the process for getting that tax abatement is for the city council to hold a public hearing on it, to approve the tax abatement. So this resolution calls for that public hearing. The date will be on September thirteenth at about six o'clock. It's that normal council meeting. And so at part of that meeting, right around that timeframe, we'll go into a public hearing for this. And so we'll have more information about the tax abatement, the property and all that stuff at that meeting. So this is just a resolution calling for that public hearing.
I'll move to adopt a resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Item number twelve is resolution twenty twenty-two dash one three, resolution on special session. Don? So because our legislators decided they didn't want to do anything this special session with bonding bill or tax bill, the League of Minnesota, or Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities has a lot of cities that are concerned by the fact that there was no special session or no bonding bill passed, no special session at this point. And it's leaving a lot of cities hanging as it relates to LGA projects. Pelican Rapids has got a project on that bonding bill that would have possibly helped had the bonding bill been passed. You know, we might have got the, well, it was looking pretty good for us getting money for the pool, so, which would have made the pool a go, more than likely. So the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is asking cities if they would like to encourage the governor and the legislators to have a special session and at least look at passing a bonding bill to pass a resolution. So that's what this, calling for a special session or encouraging them one, to do one. So that's what this resolution does. You can do it or not to do it either way. If you guys pass this resolution, we will make sure it gets to the governor and our representatives and others at the legislative level, as other, many other cities are doing, to see if we can entice them to get a, now, do a special session and get a bonding bill in place.
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirteen.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Item number thirteen is resolution twenty twenty-two dash one four, declaring sufficiency of petition and setting public hearing, which was in your packet. Yeah, so the second page of this particular part of the packet was actually a petition that was signed by residents Carrie and Elaine Johnson at two ten northeast Second Avenue. And what this is all about is, when they purchased their property in nineteen ninety-three, there's a portion of roadway that shows, the reference to it in the alley show up in their deed, in their warranty deed. And so they want to sell that property, and they can't get clear title to it without the city being able to show them that that alley and that street were vacated. So we know and we have record and resolutions or whatever vacating the alley, but we do not for the city, the street, I'm sorry, for the street. And so the idea behind, behind their petition and calling for a public hearing is to hold a public hearing to vacate that street. So again, this resolution just says, we're accepting and we have a petition, and we will go forward with the council, setting a public hearing to look at vacating that street. What's really interesting about this, I'm going to go to a map and to help you, this will also be displayed at the public hearing. But here's the property that we're referring to. This is their parcel right here. And here's an alley that was vacated. I can't zoom, I can't make it any bigger, so I hope you can see it. But here's the second street that they're talking about, that this map happens to show the street setting right here. And that's why their deed, their warranty deed references Second Street or Robson, it's Robson Avenue at the time. Going forward now, here's the county map and the new maps that we have. This is the same Second Street. This is the parcel we're talking about. But you can see that there is no alley. The street doesn't even go down that far. It's water. But because it shows a street on the original maps, this is what they have to go by, and because it was referenced on their warranty deed. So we want to hold the public here, and we do want them to help clear, get clear title. So that resolution then does call for the public hearing. It will also be on the thirteenth of September at about six fifteen. So I recommend that the council also pass this resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution two thousand twenty-two.
Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Second. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, discussion?
Will that affect any of the other properties?
None, no. It's just dealing with the street area that was abutting there parcel.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Jump up to item number ten, project nine three, pay request number two, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-nine cents. And there's two or three sheets regarding that in our packet this evening. Don? Yeah, this is just request, payment, request number two on the extension, utility extension to the county, new county garage up on Fourth Thirty, reviewed by the engineers. And the recommendation is to go ahead and pay it. And then tomorrow, I'll be sending this down to the county for reimbursement. They are paying us back for all of it, so.
I'm just curious, Don, is that extension, where does it go? I mean, I watched the whole thing, but does it go up to the building or to the right way?
The part that we're taking care of or involved in with our engineering, it runs up to their, I don't know if it goes all the way to the approach or not. And then from there, service line will go into the building.
So we don't go into the building, then? I mean, just, okay.
Their construction team in the-
Okay, thanks.
Building construction will do that part of it. We'll have a, we'll have, like we do everywhere else, you know, a stub going in there and go to a gate valve. But they'll, they'll go from the gate valve into the building.
I move to approve project ninety-three pay request number two.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Item number sixteen is Minnesota TED grant application rescinding. Don? So, yeah, that was, that was in the packet. If you recall, this is for Historic City Hall. It was the Tourism Information Center. And they had put in the original agreement the language regarding the COVID requirements that we were going to have with testing and stuff. And the council decided they weren't going to do that. So we canceled our memorandum of understanding with tourism. And they had alluded to the fact that, I think what I shared with council was, there was a few others-
You're on the wrong one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped ahead. Okay.
Threw me for a loop.
Yeah, no, yeah, okay, thank you. A couple of meetings back, basically, I shared that Bob Schliemann and I met with MnDOT, and it was regarding their transportation economic development program and getting a grant for it. The council approved him applying and writing a grant. Well, we had met, we met with MnDOT and reviewed this application and stuff, and come to find out it's not a good fit for Pelican. And basically, it's not a good fit because of the economic development component of it. In order to have a strong application, we'd have to be able to show that, to get that grant and score high, that this, that the grant application would have to show that we are either retaining a lot of jobs or we're adding a lot of new jobs because of the project. And there's nothing about putting our multi-use pass and stuff and sidewalk infrastructure, replacing all that stuff. There's nothing in that that we are going to be able to show, we're retaining a bunch of jobs in Pelican or adding new jobs because of it. So it's going to become very hard to score high enough. But in talking with MnDOT, they have another alternative transportation program grant that we can apply for, the application and the funding cycle for that later on this fall. And so I wanted to come back to council, share with you that it's not going to be a good fit to do the TED grant, and to ask council to rescind their motion to apply for that application or submit that application. And the reason we waited for this meeting is because the motion, I believe, was made by Councilman Foster, second, and by Councilman Strand. You guys weren't here last meeting, so we waited now because we'd like you guys to rescind your motions to rescind that whole application process.
Danielle, was I correct? The motions?
Strand made motion, Foster second.
Okay. So what we would need to rescind it is have Strand move to rescind that motion, and then Steve?
I move to rescind my motion.
Second that.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Okay, we're going to jump to page two. I did not forget the ledger. We'll go back to that if somebody shows up. Now we'll get into item number seventeen, explore Minnesota Tourism Centers. No, we're, sorry. Okay, you recall, we canceled this affiliation because of the COVID requirements. They went back and they, the state typically doesn't get back into facilities once they leave them. But they had a number of cities, I understand, not sure how many, that actually left this affiliation or the MO, canceled their MOUs for the same reason. So the tourism talked to the state, and they removed all references to COVID. So we're back to our original, and I did review this, with our original memorandum of understanding. It's our original one, no COVID requirements. They'd like us, the city council, to look at reinstating the affiliation and the memorandum of understanding. When you guys approve it, I send it back down to them, and we're back in the tourism facility business.
I move to reinstate.
Second that.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Item number eighteen is FYI Citywide Trail Public Open House on September one, twenty twenty-two. Don? Yep, this is just to let you guys know, this is part of Bob Schliemann, Apex Engineering, working with the committee. I think it was, I don't know if it's the park board or if there's more, I think there's more on it than just the park board. But it's the citywide trail plan that Bob is working with that committee on. And they are going to hold an open house at the high school September first, as shown in this flyer. They just basically, it's an announcement so the council's aware of it, encouraging the council to attend. So time permitting, Danielle might want to post this as a potential forum of the city council. Any questions? Thank you. Item number nineteen is economic developer position discussion. Don? Yeah, as we talk about the budget and going through the budgeting process, you know, there was, I know this, we came up as a brief conversation about whether the council would want to hold off until we get the city administrator position filled to see if there's possibly somebody that gets hired to replace me that has a strong or some economic development background, which may alleviate the need potentially for the city to have to hire a new position at a hundred thousand plus a year. And so, but there was never really, I think it might have been mentioned, yeah, let's hold off. But there was really never any action taken by the council. And so I wanted to bring it back to the council and have, and talk about a little bit more to get clear direction on, do you want me to post that job and go forward with hiring that job? Do you want me to work it into the budget and see how everything lines up as part of the budgets process? And then after we get the general fund budget done, that will give us clear direction as to whether we go forward with the position based on the budget and the levy and all that stuff. What does the council wish to do?
I thought we'd already done that.
We didn't, the council talked about it, and it was just a statement, and I'd rather have a-
Yeah, but I mean, I thought we already, it's already in the budget, wasn't it? And we've already established-
But we have an advertised one.
Right. But I mean, but that part's already done.
Yes. It was worked into the budget, but here's, here's the thing, is if we, if I continue to put it in this year's budget, or, because one of the, one of the thoughts, too, is if we're going to wait until, we don't necessarily have to have it in the budget this year for twenty twenty-three, because you did fund it last year. But if you decide you want to wait or not have it in the twenty twenty-three budget, you're going to take that much out, you'll be able to take that much out of the levy. So you'll be able to, and you haven't seen the budget yet, but we can, obviously, but we can look at how that might affect the twenty twenty-three budget. Then going forward, in a sense, you're going to potentially give the taxpayers that money back. And then, and then if you find somebody that has that economic development background as a city administrator, you may not have to fund it again. You may decide, let's just hold off, because we've got somebody that might be able to push economic development to a greater extent because of their background. If you want me to work it into the budget, you know you want to have it in the budget, and you know you want to get that position filled, then I need to post that and get going on that.
I'd like to wait and see how our process goes here, hiring.
Is there a motion?
Well, do you need a motion?
I would, I would like some type of an action, the council, just a motion to wait until after the budget before we post it or something. Something so that I know, are we posting it or are we not posting it?
Here's my take, and this is for what it's worth. We, this position or this, I mean, this was something that- We, this position or this, I mean, this was something that was, we took, I mean, survey on, and this was something that was overwhelmingly asked for, that we move forward with this. So we've already put it off at least a year from when all those surveys have happened. And now we're going to put it off another however long. Second of all, if it should be a combined position, and with all due respect, why hasn't it been that up to this point? And I'll answer that question, because you have a crazy job that requires a lot from, from you. So why we would then expect a new person to come into a job and learn your crazy job, which will take them probably a year to get, make it theirs, and then to say, okay, now that you've learned that job, here's another aspect of the job that'll take them another X amount of months or years to figure out. And now we're, we've pushed back what the community has wanted, what the chamber has wanted, even further. So I personally think it's a mistake to combine the position.
Well, Don's job in the future, it, I mean, he won't, they won't have the dam removal, they won't have the 2024 reconstruction project.
Right, but think of that. The person that's taking over for him is going to be thrown into that project full force.
But, but that project to the new person coming in, I'm not out there watching them dig holes anyway. I plan it.
I understand.
That's what that person would do with any project.
But that project hasn't been on the table for, I mean, how long have you had this job? 20 years?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. So for 18 years, economic development has not been a part of that job.
But it has been.
Now we're expecting somebody
But it has been, because in 18 years, we've done a lot of economic development. I think that the thing is, is it's, it's not, it's not happening to, to the, to the speed a lot of the people in the community would like to see it happen, and there's no doubt about that. I mean, when you've got a lot of, a lot of hats to wear, you can only focus your attention on, you know, a little bit at a time to move things along. But we have made a lot of things happen in Pelican. Again, maybe not as fast as, as
And, and to that, to that point, there's a lot that's happened that on the outside people don't necessarily see.
Correct. And the other part of it is, when I came into this job, I didn't have a public administration degree, I didn't have an economic development degree. I had a master's in business. And so, and, and because of my past careers, there was a good fit there, my technical background and everything else. So coming into this job and, and as time went by, the IT portion of it, because of what I know or knew, past careers, I was able to do a lot of the IT and do, still do a lot of the IT, which saved, saved the money a lot, or the city a lot of money in having to bring people in to do that stuff when computers were having hiccups and that type of thing. So there was a lot of things that, because of my experience and background, I was able to, that we didn't have to call out to do. The new guy coming in here probably isn't going to be, well, I shouldn't say that because of the younger people out there nowadays, as techie as I was when it comes to computers and fixing computers and doing all that type of stuff. So, so I think their skill set and their training and their background, especially if it's somebody that went to school for public administration or has some, you know, they have degrees in economic development, if there is somebody that basically comes in and has that, they're going to be able to do economic development because, to, to more of an extent than I did, because they won't have to wear the other hats. You know, and that's just, again, again, I, I, I think, I think the economic development position, yes, the community wanted it, and yes, we were moving forward, we were doing that, and we've pretty much got everything in place, I can put the ad out there. It's just a matter of, I just wanted to make sure the council wants to go forward with it without knowing where the budget's landing, because it does make a difference on that budget. And the other thing about that, let me just add, they're doing that wage study, and with Flirian Hood, I had a conversation with them about that wage study, and they are going to, as part of the wage study, they are going to include that position. Doesn't mean we have to fill it or anything, they're just going to make sure that they have that, that, that rating for pay equity and that, and that pay grade, you know, pay level and all that, the scales, that that's all in there too. So we are set to go, whether we go now, whether you go next year, whether you go two years from now. That's the plan with the wage study.
I just, I don't know. I still question the combining the two positions, but you wanted to make a motion.
Well, I'm wondering what Steve's thinking.
Well, it's going to be about two months before we're done with the budget. So I'd like to see where we land with the budget too before we
So then my, my, then my question would be is, if we placed it in the budget previously, and now we have to make sure, we want to see how this coming budget lands, so if we do hire the position, every year are we going to have to see where the budget lands to see how we were going to work, work it in the budget?
No, because we, but we budgeted for this position last year when we did the budget.
Right.
So we collected that money. So that money is there for that position. So if we say we do not fill the city administrator job with also economic development, so then we'll have two positions, say beginning of November, we could hire, we'll know where our budget is, say, the beginning of November. So we could say we're going to start selecting for the economic development position, that money that's here now would be used going into the future, where we wouldn't have to budget for that next year, but we would have to budget for it the year after.
Yeah, technically, and the other part of it too is, you mentioned November, but really the, the goal is to be done with the general budget by the second meeting in September, because we have to have it down to the state by then. And we can't go higher, we can only go lower. So I think you guys will have a good idea of where the budget lands and the levies are going to land within a month. And then if we post it at that point, you know, you could potentially have a, a person in place, you know, November timeframe. And we still have to buy office equipment and find a place for them also, because we haven't figured out that piece of puzzle yet.
Dr. Stoppa?
Go hear a motion.
Do we have to do a motion to land?
Well, I, I just want, I want it in the minutes, whether basically we're moving forward today or, or we're going to wait till the end of September to decide.
Which is next month. I mean, that's not
Yeah, it's six weeks away.
Yeah. I move that we wait till the end of September.
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same? Motion carried.
I still think it's a mistake to combine.
Okay, let's go to item 20, Administrator Report, Don.
Since the last meeting, I had a dip. I'm ahead of meeting, worked to get all this stuff put together for tonight's meeting, with Danielle. Worked on the 2023 budget and met with the Budget Committee one time. We're going to meet a couple of times again this week. I attended the Otter Tail County Complete Streets Policy Workshop, which I'm a part of the group of cities and other individuals that are, are sitting in with, to help develop or give a direction to the county on a policy for complete streets. And then I also attended the, the monthly 2024 MINDOT virtual meeting on the, the 2024 project. That's my report.
Any questions for Don?
Thank you.
Item number 21, Mayor Report, a few items in this last, what has it been, three weeks? July 27th, conducted a conversation with the mayor at Historic City Hall. August 2nd, attended a Microsoft team meeting, Otter Tail County Housing Convening or Housing Summit meeting. August 4th, attended the Local Places, Local, Local Foods, Local Places Steering Committee Kitchen Feasibility Study Meeting at Media Center at Pelican Rapids High School. August 4th, I visited with Jeff Shonak regarding the Ultra Light Event and some improvements that he plans on making for the upcoming year, 2023. August 11th, attended the 2024 Pelican Rapids Complete Streets Meeting. August 12th, also attended the Budget Meeting with Councilman Foster, Administrator Solga. August 12th, attended the Open House at Otter Tail County Historical Society exhibiting high school students' art in Otter Tail County, and there, there was two Pelican Rapids students that have art exhibited there. It's Sylvia Pesh and Alex Ramirez, and that art will be displayed through, excuse me, through September 30th. August 13th, attended the Pelican Rapids, excuse me, Pelican Lake Property Owners Annual Meeting, and the reason I attended that, because they, they did pass a, a motion to do a feasibility study on, on their wastewater there, and this didn't get brought up at the meeting at Dunton Hall, but Pelican Rapids was mentioned, City of Pelican Rapids was mentioned previously in conversations or alternatives of piping their wastewater to Pelican Rapids. We have, they have had no, no communication here with City Hall, so they may in the future when this feasibility study goes through. Attended the Rudy Day's, Brayden, Vergis on August 14th, and then today met with Administrator Solga regarding the agenda for this afternoon's city council meetings. Any questions for me?
Pelican Lake didn't ask for recommendations on who they should have, build their wastewater treatment plant?
No, didn't get into that. Okay, let's, let's bounce up to item number six, Library Report. We were hoping to have somebody from the Library Committee here to present this, but is there any questions?
Do we know why it's closed, September 1 through 5? I saw in the paper that it's supposed to be closed for the week?
Because of vacationing and comp time and
Yeah, that's our understanding, all we know is
The whole staff is taking a vacation?
We're not sure of that. That's why I wanted somebody here to address that.
Our understanding, all we know is that the, the library director has vacation and comp that they were trying to work down or she's trying to work down, and so I, beyond that, what was reported, the minutes don't reflect what the conversation had, what transpired at, as, as from the Library Board meeting that, that manager, right, the library directors or the board decide to shut it down that week, but we're going to have to ask them next month, or by then it'd be too late.
Well, yeah, by then, who cares? I mean, by the time we have our next meeting, they, they're the time.
Library Board President said they did present this information to us at a previous council meeting. They presented the information, but
There was no explanation why, and I guess we didn't ask the question.
Correct. Any other comments on the Library Board Report? Don, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
I'm wondering if, because we just blanket approved these reports with not really understanding any of these, I think it needs to be brought to the board that we need to make sure there's somebody here, because I think we're approving a lot of these reports and these vague, their vague minutes make no
I had many questions tonight.
Make no mention of this kind of stuff, and then we get the after the fact, well, it was presented to you before, and we have to try to decode their minutes to figure out what's, what was presented, so.
Well, I think it's kind of tough to decode minutes when there aren't anything in the minutes. Look at the minutes you got. There is no text in there, there's nothing in there that would give you any suggestion as to what the conversation was that made them decide to close the library. So you're getting everything a month later, and what you're getting has nothing in it. So you guys can't even figure out what questions you want to ask because you don't have any information.
I just
No, I'm on the same page you are.
That's it.
Any other questions? Hearing none, is there, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, yeah, aye.
All is the same? Motion carried. Item number 22, Adjournment.
Oh, I have a general comment before we adjourn. Do you want me to just come up?
Yes.
Okay. So as you guys, well, some of you may know, we have started a church and, and currently we meet in Dunville, and our heart's desire is to be in Pelican Rapids. And so Thrive Church in Pelican Rapids, and I just want to let you guys know that we're looking for some space to meet at in Pelican Rapids. And so if you guys have any ideas or, or if you guys have any connections of where we should look at to rent or possibly buy, but, yeah, just thought I would put that out there with you guys and let you guys know that we'd like to be in Pelican Rapids, which, I don't know if you've seen any of our stuff, but we're Thrive Church, Pelican Rapids, and currently we're in Dunville, so we'd like to be in Pelican Rapids, but
Cool. Thank you.
Cool, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same? Hearing adjourned.